Good evening, everyone. This is the regular scheduled meeting of the Board of County Commissioners being April the 20th, 2015. We will call the meeting to order and Chair, Commissioner Eifert, I almost promoted you, will lead us in invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
I've got two verses I want to read, Proverbs, Chapter 3, Verse 5 and 6, and it talks about guidance. Trust in the Lord with all thine heart and lead not into that own understanding. In all thy ways acknowledge him and he shall direct thy paths. Let us pray. Our gracious heavenly Father, we humbly come to you again tonight thanking you once again for many blessings. Thank you, Lord, for the county that we live in, for the beauty. Thank you, Lord, for the people. Thank you, Lord, for everyone that's been, came here tonight, Lord, and we pray, Lord, for those who are sick and afflicted in our community, that you'll just be with them. We pray for our military and their families for the sacrifices they make. We pray for our police, our fire, and our EMS workers that look after our safety. We pray, Lord, that you'll just be with us and keep us safe. These things we ask in your precious name I pray. Amen. Let us stand for the pledge.
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Eifert. We have the approval or any adjustments to the agenda. If you will look, we're going to pull item number five. Number six will become number five. Then number six will recognize Terry Griffin, the Superintendent of Public Schools, to make a presentation. Number seven will be the recognition, and then eight, nine, 10, down to the consent agenda on number 11. Does anyone have any other adjustment?
Madam Chair, I move to accept the agenda as changed.
We have a motion to accept the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second. Commissioner Ashito, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero.
Madam Chair, I would like to abstain from voting on items number one and items number four.
Thank you. Commissioner Lohan wishes to abstain from the public hearing, item number one and item number four, the cosmetology facility financing. I believe we need to vote on that.
Make a motion, Madam Chair, that we grant Mr. Law, Commissioner Lohan his request.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of allowing Commissioner Lohan to abstain from those agenda items as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. The motion carries six oh. The first order of business is public hearings, so we'll call the public hearing to order at this time. It is a hearing for Ridgecrest Volunteer Fire Department to receive approval for tax-exempt financing, and our presenters are Neil Center with URE Bank and Chief Rick Oudy and Treasurer Mike Thompson. Gentlemen, will you come up in the order you wish to speak?
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Neil Center. I'm representing URE Bank, and I am here tonight with Mike Thompson, Rick Oudy, and Charlie Carricker on behalf of Ridgecrest Volunteer Fire Department. URE Bank has been helping Ridgecrest Volunteer Fire Department with a loan request, and we are requesting approval tonight for tax-exempt financing. This loan has been approved for $340,000 at a fixed rate of 2.5 percent for eight years. This request, or this request will refinance two existing loans held at other financial institutions and combine them into one note. If approved, this request will accomplish three main objectives. First, this will reduce their monthly payment by approximately $995 a month, and will, secondly, save approximately $40,000 in interest compared to the current loan structure, and finally, these savings will help with truck and equipment needs in the future. At this time, I'd like to open this up to the board. If you have any questions, you may ask them, ask them now. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Senator. Does the board have any questions? Hearing none. What is the pleasure of board? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Okay. The public hearing is now closed and we're back in regular session. So is there a motion for the approval of the resolution? And a second? You can't make the motion in a second too, Tony. I believe Gene made the motion.
Madam Chair, I would like to second the motion that Commissioner Dennis has made for the.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner Burleson. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say no. The motion carries six zero. Thank you. The next item is the public hearing for the naming of a private road or private drive off Raymond's Ridge Lane. We now call the public hearing to order. Our presenter is Brandy Webster, the E-911 Database Coordinator. Good evening.
Good evening. The private drive to be named is located off Raymond's Ridge Lane, approximately 10 feet west of the Wyatt Road intersection in Albemarle, North Carolina. While in the process of naming newly constructed road Raymond's Ridge Lane, it was discovered that Raymond's Ridge Lane and an unnamed driveway would intersect at the same location on Wyatt Road. It was brought to our attention that this issue may cause problems for first responders and emergency personnel. Therefore, we decided that the best solution was to name the private drive so that it would be easily identifiable to responding agencies. In your packets, there are emails which detail the road issues and the location of the map, or a location map. On March 4th, a notice was sent to property owners on the drive requesting that they send in five names. And on March 16th, a letter, I received a letter back from all property owners proposing only one road name, Old Wyatt Road. This road name did not duplicate any other road names, therefore it was approved. Now I'm requesting that you approve this road name, and I'm open for any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Brandy, you have, you've got Old Wyatt Road and Raymond's Ridge and Wyatt Road intersecting?
Yes.
Is that where I'm reading this map right?
Yes, the existing road is Wyatt Road and the newly constructed road is Raymond's Ridge. Old Wyatt Road will technically come off of Raymond's Ridge.
Okay, thank you.
I think there's a couple of questions about the locations of the road. I rode by over the weekend and probably, it looks like maybe a few hundred feet down Raymond's Ridge is where Old Wyatt actually, well, the proposed road of Old Wyatt actually cuts off of Raymond's Ridge.
Um.
I mean, I mean, that's, that's, when I rode by it, it doesn't, they don't come out exactly in the same spot on the Wyatt Road where they are currently.
Okay. Um, last time I rode out there, it was, they were pretty close. The reason we're naming it is because it was brought to our attention by one of the volunteer fire departments of Indy, and they were going to have trouble kind of deciphering which way to go as far as Raymond's Ridge and then the unnamed driveway and the addresses down there, so they didn't want to, they didn't want to put those people in jeopardy by not being able to figure out where they were.
Is there a motion to approve the naming of the road to Raymond's Ridge Lane? Yes, I did. Okay, we're closed, public hearing. Appears not to be.
Madam Chair, I make a motion, we approve the naming of the road, Old Wyatt Road.
We have a motion by Commissioner Eifert. Did you second the motion? Peter?
Madam, Madam Chair, I think we need to come out of public hearing before we.
I did. Yeah, I did. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say no. The motion carries seven zero. Our next item is a presentation by the American Legion Post Number 76, Patty Honeycutt, the President, is our presenter along with Commander Tommy Allen and Vice Commander Cal Massengale. I hope I pronounced that right. Good evening.
Madam Chair and Commissioners, good evening, and thank you for letting us come again this, this year to make a presentation. I'm Patty Honeycutt, the President of the American Legion Auxiliary Unit 76. I have the privilege of working directly with the American Legion Post 76 veterans. They all have military backgrounds, and they have a vision for the future for Stanley County citizens. The veterans of this post seek to create opportunities for business and private citizens alike to participate in events and activities that can grow and benefit all who participate or involved. I would like to introduce to you the Walter B. Hill American Legion Post 76 and the American Legion Post 76 Agricultural Fair Manager, our Vice Commander Cal Massengale, and he will continue from here. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, folks, for allowing us to be here. I would also, at my rear is Marvin Boss. Marvin is very active in helping at the fair, even though he's not a Stanley County resident, he is, I think we should kind of allow him to be one at least temporarily, okay? He has helped us tremendously. And we both have a few things that we'd like to, like to say and present. First off, American Legion Post 76, as Patty said, is made up of not only veterans, but all of us that are members are either World War II, Korean War, Vietnam, Desert Storm, Grenada, Iraq, or Afghanistan war veterans. The auxiliary has been very active in helping us as well as community volunteers. We are all volunteer. None of us receive any monies for what we do. We're also a nonprofit organization. At the, at the fairgrounds, we support the veterans of Stanley County. We also represent a Boy Scout troop, Post Twenty, Troop 29, and also a Cub Scout troop. We have also the American Legion Baseball for Albemarle, Stanley County. We have several events that we have held along with the Stanley County, which now we have kind of renamed that to the Walter B. Hill Agricultural Fair, okay? We were, we, we've worked, all of us, and the volunteers that have helped us, have worked very hard over the past two or three years to improve not only the fairgrounds, but the, the agricultural fair that we held or hold each year. This year, in 2014, we were actually presented by the North Carolina Fair Association, the Image Award for the most improved fair in North Carolina. We were competing with 42 fairs. Some of those were the Dixie Classic, which is much larger than us, the North Carolina State Fair, and many others. So, we're very proud of this. It's something that we worked, like I say, we worked extremely hard for. What we're trying to do is we're pushing agriculture in Stanley County. We have taken the fair from being an amusement situation into both an agricultural setting as well as, of course, we have an amusement company come in, and last year it was very good. We're working with the FFA, we're working with the FHA in not only Stanley County, but we're actually reaching out to Montgomery County, Anson County, and surrounding counties, okay? I'm going to let Marvin speak for just a minute on some things that we're planning for this year's fair.
Madam Chairman, Commissioners, thank you very much for allowing me to get a passport into Stanley County since I'm a Cabarrus County native, but I thank you all for letting me be a part of Stanley County most of the year, as a matter of fact. I just wonder sometimes what, if you really know what kind of gold nugget is right here in Stanley County. Agriculture runs deep. Steve Troxler tell you that it ranks one of the highest of any other in, in the whole world. And these people, they're feeding each one of you. And a fair is a opportunity for people to be able to showcase. When we were all growing up, everybody could see a cow or chicken or whatever, but you've got people right in the cities that don't even know what a cow or chicken looks like. So it's our, our ability to try to further make that be known to the people that don't have that ability to be around a cow or a horse or a mule or whatever anymore. The people now, in the last two years, just to show you what we've done to bring to Stanley County, we've brought over $5,000 worth of monies to help with the fair for things like the horse pulls, the tractor pulls and everything, out of Cabarrus. But please don't tell them, because they may ban me forever coming back then, and I'll have to own a new home. But yes, I've got people up there that believes in your fair that much that they want to help. So I, we come to you tonight to ask to please help us make this the greatest fair in North Carolina, the agricultural fair. I thank you very much for allowing me to come and talk. Thank you.
Thank you. I want to thank you for all the support you give to the former veterans, for all your efforts, your hours in help, helping with scouts and ball teams. You mentioned so many things, and the agricultural organizations, but most importantly, congratulations on that award.
Thank you.
We're very proud for you, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Do we have security, do we have security here tonight anywhere?
I see none.
I feel pretty secure myself, but I think we can proceed.
I think I know most everybody out there, and I feel pretty comfortable. Notes taken of that, Commissioner Ashito, thank you. The next item is Stanley Community College Cosmetology Facility Financing, and Andy Lucas, our county manager, is going to be our presenter, and I want to recognize that there are several members of the Board of Trustees with us tonight, and their chairman, Ms. Nadine Bowers, is here, and welcome to y'all.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, members of the board, and the, and the folks in the Community College can certainly answer some questions that I may not be able to answer if questions arise as to the specifics of the program. This has been a, a project that we've been collaborating on for, for several months. What you have this evening is a public hearing for the proposed financing for the new cosmetology facility at the Stanley County Community College Campus in Albemarle, 12,000 square foot facility. The proposed financing is roughly 2.3, 2.2, $3 million, and that's including equipment and, and the facility. It'll be a design build, and at some point, we had that item on the agenda this evening, but the Community College folks will evaluate the design, build qualifications, and provide a recommendation to us at a date in May. Since those folks will be operating and living in that facility, felt as though it would be prudent to have them weigh in on the selection of a contractor to build the facility. So this evening, what we have is the application to the LGC for the financing, as well as a resolution authorizing a financing agreement with the low bid financial institution, which was URE Bank, for the financing of the facility and the equipment. There will be a public hearing that's required, and then once the public hearing's held, the board can take action on the resolution for the application, as well as a resolution authorizing the financing agreement with URE Bank for the construction and the equipment. And then any other, and then we would ask that you authorize staff to negotiate any changes in said resolutions in the best interest of the county if anything arises moving forward with these resolutions.
Thank you. We'll now call the public hearing to order. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward to speak for or against item number four as stated, the facility financing and related items? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Gentlemen, do you have any questions?
Madam Chair, if I just may, I want to also just provide clarification. Basically, the way this will get repaid is through the current expense of the Community College. They, they will, we will deduct from their current expense the amount needed to repay the debt over the, the 10-year term for the equipment and the 25-year term for the facility. And so at some meeting in May, we will actually also approve a memorandum of understanding with the Community College that will outline those specifics so that they, that it's in writing and memorialized that they will, their, their current expense will be reduced, and obviously we'll just shift that to a, a debt service line item so that the debt service obligations that will be incurred here will be satisfied. And so there isn't any, there's not, it's not anticipated this is going to require any additional county revenue to pay for this, that it's already built into the Community College budget. And so that will happen, as well as the, since there'll need to be a deed of trust as part of this financing, we will actually be deeded the property as part of that memorandum of understanding and as part of that process, and then that property will be part of a deed of trust for that financing instrument, and then we will essentially lease that back to the Community College over that term until the debt is satisfied.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, can we make a motion for all three items, Andy?
Board, four items.
Well, you've done held the public hearing.
Well, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution, authorize the filing by application, and also approve the resolution authorizing new finance agreement, and also authorizing the staff to negotiate any changes to the said resolution.
We have a motion by Commissioner Dennis and a second by Commissioner Ashito. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion carries seven zero.
Madam Chair, six zero.
Excuse me. You did abstain. We'll now have a report from Melanie Hollis, Library Director. She's going to give a report from the City Hall Next Feasibility Study Committee.
Good evening. As some of you were not on the board when we began our feasibility study, I just wanted to run, run over with you a few of the reasons that we wanted to do this. One is, the major reason is space. We are currently keeping some of the museum artifacts in storage at the old city hall, or the old city fire department that's next to the library, and they have got another tenant in that space, and so we need to move our stuff out of there. We don't have enough space in the current museum to allow for larger exhibits. We can't even fit class, school classes in the museum. And we would also like to move the Heritage Room in combination with the museum over to the City Hall to increase the space for our historical and genealogical documents and give researchers more opportunity to use those documents in conjunction with the things that the museum has. Our committee has looked at this in depth, and we have found that it's a fairly feasible project for the county to do. You'll notice in your packets, all of the items that we looked at. Last two weeks ago, we were at the City Council meeting, and they have agreed to let us use the building for a dollar a year lease, and then they will give us grant monies to cover the expenditures that they're currently have on the building, including the electricity and the elevator maintenance and service. And then with a few additional dollars from the county to repair some HVAC and some flooring, lighting, just a few basic things that we would need to move into the building, we, the committee did find that this would be a very feasible project and would engra, would greatly increase the number and quality of the exhibits that we could provide and the research space for historians and genealogists. So does anybody have any questions for me?
Madam Chair, if I may, what is, what is the square footage of the current, current
The current museum is 2,400 square feet, so that includes display space, office space, and storage space for the artifacts. The current Heritage Room square footage is 626 square feet. That includes all of the documents and genealogy resources for the county. So we would move into a combined 5,760 square feet on the main floor, and then we would also use the second floor for the storage area and a few offices. So it's about 10,000 square feet that we would move into.
Are there any further questions?
Madam, Madam Chair, I do have a question. The utility bill that the, the former City Hall, do we have any idea what it was running when it was being utilized on a daily basis rather than just sitting there as an empty shell?
I don't think that we looked back that far, Commissioner Lohan. They have had a group in the building for over the last year. They have not been using the entire building during that time. So utility costs could vary.
Are the utility costs of 11,400, is that what's been pretty much the utility cost?
That's the highest of the last two years. So that's the number we picked.
Okay, and do you have any idea what they keep the heating system on?
I do not.
Okay. This, this question relates to the existing building. The roof, my understanding, has been replaced recently, or when I say recently, in the last couple of years. Is there still water leakage there?
There, there are a few leaks, yes.
And this question, I guess, would come to the county. I wonder if our person that installed the roof has been contacted to make corrections to get the roof right?
Certainly, it's under warranty. We, we, there was an occasion where someone went back out there. My understanding is there's not an issue with the roof. It's the issue, the issue is the sub, there seems to be- It's the issue, the issue is the sub, there seems to be some issue with water coming in on the, from the foundation or from the slab. And that, it's happened when it's, we've had significant rain events. It's not something that happens on a consistent basis. And, and I haven't received any kind of, you know, request to make an improvement to that from anybody from the library or facility. So it's one of those things that did happen. And I know that, you know, issues were done to try to bring it, to clean it up and, but it's not something that, you know, we've received any kind of, I've seen, seen a request on in terms of capital expenditure to replace it. I would think that if there was an issue with that slab, it could be, it could be replaced by, you know, digging that out and putting new fill in and repairing it and diverting the water wherever the water's coming from. I'm not sure, you know, it's right behind, that hill's right behind there. So my guess is it's coming off that hill and then there needs to be some way to divert that water away from the building and that foundation. But my guess is that's something that could be done to fix that and to remedy that problem. But I haven't seen a request for that. So unless I see a request for it, Bill, I, I can't, I can't make a recommendation to you all to fix it.
And if I can just further comment on that, the crack in the floor and the, the water seepage happened right before we started into this project. So I didn't want to request that the county repair that floor if we were going to be moving.
Significant rain event, I think we've had one last week, week and a half. Have we had any kind of seepage during this past week, week and a half storm?
Not that's been reported to me. Has there been any water? Not that's been reported to me.
And, and it's my understanding, the main reason you want to move is because of space.
Mm-hmm.
And.
And visibility being more centrally located downtown.
I, I guess this is my other question. Parking, is that a concern?
It is not a concern. We did discuss it. There are three or four spaces behind the building where staff would park and then during the day would be on the street parking or using the City Hall lot. It's one of the things that we did discuss with the city folks and they were fine with people using the City Hall lot to park in. In the evenings would be when we would have major programs and things and so there would be more open parking downtown.
Do we have any plans or anything for the current building if this was to take place?
I'll let you go first.
The library does not have any plans for the building. Andy and I have sort of tossed around some possible usages, but there's nothing firm at this point.
I don't have anything specific, you know, we don't have any true space needs per se from an office staff perspective. You know, we have some utility and SCUSA types of issues, but I think some of those will be remedied by the guard property that we're going to obtain and being able to immediately acquire some storage. That's really where we have our issues here at the Commons is storage, you know, surplus vehicles, pipe, you know, our tractor, backhoe, truck, those things truly need to be stored out of the weather and the, the guard property will immediately address that for us. And so those, but from a staffing perspective and office space, we really don't have a need. You know, some, I've, I've heard people say in the past that, you know, maybe the CVB needs a more prominent location in the community. And so, you know, I guess that's a potential, but I don't know how the CV board, CVB board would feel about them moving out of this space. And so, you know, that would be an issue that, that group would have to discuss and we have representation on that board, but that's certainly, you know, a lot of other communities do as well. So there's not an immediate, you know, county need for that facility if it was vacated. I mean, obviously it could potentially be leased to the private sector for, for space. So, you know, in, in the, in the short term, someone's going to have to keep the power on in there and there's, there's going to be a cost. There's no doubt there's going to be a cost that needs to be in the board's decision-making process of, of vacating that space and going to another space. You would want to consider that that HVAC, both from a cooling and heating perspective, would need to be on there. You have lawn maintenance that would continue to have to be maintained. And so there, there are going to be expenses on that facility whether you're there or not.
Any further questions?
I don't have a question. Melanie, I, I was here when we started this and I thought it was a good, a good idea then and I still think it's a good idea. If there's not any other questions, I'll make a motion, we approve the plan as presented.
Madam Chair, I would maybe like for our board to take into consideration to table this item until after budget season. We're, you know, during the budget right now and, you know, any cost that we incur, we, we may want to consider building that into our budget as we go.
I believe Commissioner Dennis has made a motion.
I'd like to make a second so we could have discussion.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
I just want to appreciate the partnership y'all have worked on with the City of Albemarle on this and all the work and I think we use twenty-five thousand dollars would come from the fund balance if I'm not mistaken, Andy, or just out of this budget year?
If you're going to do it this budget year, I mean, you're going to have to appropriate fund balance.
Fund balance.
You know, and I think that's, I'm hearing at least one commissioner want to take this up as part of your budget deliberations. And as you know, you already have a, a projected deficit and so you may want to consider this in a, in a bigger, bigger scheme of all your programming and services. But if you were to make a, make a decision this fiscal year to move forward, yes, it would be fund balance.
At, at this time, I don't know that I can support this at this time. If we were able to table this until after the budget, I, I may feel differently, but at this time I can't.
I do have one other question regarding the City of Albemarle's commitment. Is that commitment a ti, is there a time limit on it or is it for the next three, four, five, six months?
There, they did not put a time commitment on it. The only commitment that they put on it was that you would commit to your part.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I certainly approve, agree with this, that something needs to be done, but I also agree with Commissioner Burleson that getting into the budget process, we might want to table this. Sounds like I'm wishy-washy, I'm for it, but yet it is a budgeted item and we need to consider that. So I'd have to agree with Commissioner Burleson.
It's not a, it's not a, you know, in my opinion, it's not a life safety issue. I don't, I don't see why we can't wait, you know, a month or two and further discuss it. I, I think it's a, a good idea, but right now I just can't support it because of budget season. I would like to see us get into that.
We have a motion and a second before us requesting the approval of the plan of moving the museum and the Heritage Room to the City Hall NX building. All those in favor of approving the proposed plan say aye.
Aye.
We had, I believe, two ayes. All those opposed, gentlemen, let's do this so the clerk can get it right. All those opposed to approving the plan. One, two, three, four, five. Five votes. Show of hands, all those in favor of approving the proposed plan of moving the museum and the Heritage Room to the City Hall building, raise your hand if you're in favor of it. Let the record reflect two votes. All those opposed to approving the plan, raise your hand. Let the record reflect five votes in opposition. Thank you.
That doesn't mean it's dead, okay?
I would, Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we reconsider this during our budget process.
And I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to address this in our budget process. All those in favor of so doing, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Seven zero vote in favor of addressing this during the budget process.
I do thank you all.
Appreciate the work y'all have done in this so far.
Next order of business is Ms. Terry Griffin, our Superintendent of Public Schools, and she'll be presenting the budget for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen school year.
I believe Brian is going to fix the monitor so that you'll be able to see the presentation. I also have Mr. Bill Josie, our Chief Finance Officer, with me this evening.
Mr. Lucas, Madam Chairman and Commissioners, I'd like to begin by saying thank you for allowing me to come and stand before you this evening to present some of the school district's needs as we move into the next fiscal school year. You do have a handout that was put at your places prior to the meeting that you can refer to as well. Here you see the vision statement of Stanley County Schools. And again, I believe that all the requests that you will be seeing this evening fit into the vision that we have for our system to provide our students with an educational foundation to promote career and college readiness, lifelong learning and citizenship, as well as to promote our mission statement of care and that's college and career readiness for all students, academic support, relationships between students and the school system and Just a few quick facts about our school system. As you well know, we have twenty-one schools. Our current average daily membership as of March tenth is eight thousand five hundred and fifty-two students in grades K through thirteen. We are currently fifty-four point two percent free and reduced lunch. And again, that's as of our January one count that will be used for planning for the fifteen, sixteen school year. Our cohort graduation rate is eighty-one point two percent and compared to North Carolina this past year, it was eighty-three point nine percent. Our dropout rate is two point one percent and that's approximately eighty-six students. And I do want to say that we were very excited to say that we did reduce. Previous year, we had approximately a hundred and eleven dropouts. So again, that dropout rate is moving in the right direction. It's still just a bit above the state average, but we are seeing progress in this area. Just a few quick facts about how we're doing academically. Here you can see our reading end of grade assessments. Stanley County, this past school year, we were at fifty-eight point two percent of our students scored on grade level in grades three through eight reading as compared to the state, which fifty-six point three. And again, the graph's just a quick pictorial that Stanley County slightly above the state average. Stanley County is in the blue and all of these graphs and North Carolina is represented in the orange. As far as our math end of grade assessments, here you can see that Stanley County scored slightly below the state average, just slightly about a percent less. The sharp decline that you're going to see from the two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen is reflected in both the state and the district and that was with the implementation of the new curriculum. The next slide shows the end of course or the high school, how we're measured in terms of our progress in math and reading. Math one, you can see that Stanley County scored slightly above the state average there. Stanley County, we had sixty-four percent of our students scoring at or above grade level as opposed to the state, which was sixty percent. English two is the measure for reading now and the reason you only have two years of data here is because prior to the twelve, thirteen school year, it was actually measured with English nine. So you can see we are slightly below the state average in terms of our English two percentage of students that are at or above grade level. The next slide shows our sciences and the, we've combined our fifth and eighth grade science scores. And here you can see Stanley County Schools, we scored approximately sixty-five point six percent of our students scored grade level proficient and again, very close to the state percentage, which was sixty-seven and eight tenths percent. In our biology, which is our high school measure of science, Stanley County had fifty point five percent of our students at or above grade level. And you can see that was slightly less than the state average, which was fifty-three point nine percent. This is a slide that most of you have seen before. It, it basically shows you where our funding comes from and as you can well see, that about sixty-eight percent of our funding comes from the state level, which, and it composes the largest percentage of our funding budget, operating budget. Our local funds represent approximately eighteen percent of our operating budget, eight percent federal, and six percent is enterprise, which is the child nutrition. Our total operating budget for the fourteen, fifteen of the current school year was seventy million, twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-one dollars as indicated here on the graph. I'd like to share just a few of our budget highlights from the fourteen, fifteen school year and certainly I did not list everything. I wanted to do this very succinctly in one slide. But in terms of our capital outlay, we were able to, we are completing our security access door solutions at our high schools. South Stanley was completed earlier this year and North Stanley is currently in progress. The Chromebook project has been extended down through our middle grades. Our students in high school and our middle schools now have act, one-to-one access to Chromebooks. We also have upgraded many of our cameras, our camera systems for security and that is on the, in our buildings and our, our school buses. Also in our current budget, we did purchase a new wrecker and maintenance stand in the area of transportation. We also did upgrades in terms of our building management system for the HVAC, roof repairs, gym floor replacement at West Stanley High School. And I think the major roof repair there was also at West Stanley High School and there were some other minor ones. And then just miscellaneous carpet, asphalt and painting. In terms of our current expense budget, would like to say thank you. Our teachers really appreciated the one-time instructional supply allotment that you gave us for this year for science and literacy needs. We were able to start up our athletic trainer program for the current school year. We did add one school nurse. We added cross-country to our middle school athletic programs and we added an additional social worker and three-fourths of that came out of our local operating budget. We were able to get a grant to complete the, the whole position. Now, the next slide that you see is our requests, our current expense requests for the upcoming school year. At the top, you can basically see it starts off by showing what our current expense budget was for the current year and that's the nine million, eight hundred, eighty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The next group of items that you have here totals two hundred thousand and those were one-time allotments that we were given for the current school year. And I mentioned earlier, the instructional supplies for the science labs and for the literacy, which libraries and classroom collections. And then the thirty thousand that we used for our athletic trainer supplies to start up the program. So basically, if you take that from where we started, you end up with nine million, six hundred sixty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven dollars. Now, the next group of items that you are looking at, you have seen before when you asked me to come to your planning retreat at the airport. These are basically the items that I presented to you then and you'll notice as far as the number of items in the schools to be served, this is serving all of our schools as they currently are. And I'm not going to go through and actually read all of this to you this evening, but the one-time budget request basically in summary was to start implementing STEM in our elementary and middle schools. The fifty-five thousand was basically is to support software and supplies for teachers, our elementary teachers to use to start implementing STEM at the elementary level. And again, this is for eleven elementary schools. The next two items, the one hundred and sixty thousand, again, that is to have STEM labs in our middle schools. And then the two hundred thousand is for. and then the $200,000 is for the actual software and materials. We are planning, if we're able to implement the STEM labs in our middle schools, we would use our current staffing to staff our labs. We would be doing some adjustments in terms of the teachers that would be responsible for these labs. And again, that, the one-time request there totaled $415,000. The next list that you see here, certainly, in our opinion, will serve to strengthen our instructional programs and to support our classroom instruction. And again, I'm not going to read through all of these line by line. I'll be happy to answer any questions. I know some of you had follow-up questions after the planning session. I believe I did submit to you a tutorial breakdown of how those dollars would be used, as well as a job description for the literacy coaches. So again, this particular group of items does total $1,493,285, and again, those would be in the continuing budget. So the total continuing operating budget that we are proposing to you is $12,64,452, and this is an increase of $2,197,875. Now, moving to the next slide, this is our capital outlay budget request. And would like to go ahead and preface, as I, before I start talking about this list, at the bottom, we did do a disclaimer and say that the Board, the Finance and Facilities Committee, reserve to go back once our facility study is complete, and then look at going back to our fund balance if needed regarding any major concerns that may come out of the facility study. Essentially, we are requesting the same amount as you gave us last year, that is $1,830,000 for the year. The actual request totaled $2,141,500, and we are proposing to take $311,500 out of our existing fund balance. And again, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have about any of the individual items that are there.
Let's see, a quick question. What's the latest from Raleigh about what y'all are expecting? I think I heard that perhaps you might get less money this year?
Right, and one thing-
With teacher's assistance and stuff?
Right, let me back up on the current expense budget and say, basically, when we completed this budget, obviously, the governor's budget is all that we have right now. We know the Senate and the House still have to come up with their budgets, so this budget request is basically based on the governor's budget, and the teacher assistant cuts are not in the governor's budget, therefore, we did not include it, again, in this one. I will say this in terms of the anticipated cuts, the $169,634, that is what we are anticipating, or that we could be cut in terms of driver's education. And again, that money has been taken out of the state highway fund. Certainly, if that does get back in the budget, certainly, we would not need that, but again, we were basically making these requests on the governor's budget that is out there right now. So certainly, there could be additional cuts in terms of teacher assistance if that is not put back in the recurring budget. And Mr. Josie, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add to that or not.
Does the board have any other questions?
Dr. Griffin, as far as the number of students as of March 10th-
Yes, sir.
Eighty-five, fifty-two. Do we have any idea what the number of students were during the same period last year?
Typically, it is, we may show a decrease from one year to the next, from the beginning to the end of the year. It can fluctuate as many as 100 students. That's not unusual.
Do we know what the last count was?
I do not know off the top of my head, but I will be glad to, you're saying a year ago right now. I can send you that tomorrow morning.
Or it doesn't have to be a year ago. I'd like to know the last count, last, or the previous count versus where we are today.
Well, what I can tell you is we started the school year off with, make sure I give you the right number there, we began the year with 8,657. Does that help Commissioner LaHawn?
And do we monitor where those students go when they leave, drop off?
We, at the end of the year, we do get an analysis whether they transfer to another school, whether they just withdraw, dropouts. Again, we have, we are decreasing our dropouts, but yes, that is a part of our state monitoring.
Okay, and is that tracked per, I guess, is it tracked per school?
We have access to, yes.
That's interesting numbers I'd like to see if I could.
I'll be happy if you'd like to see the actual opening of school numbers by school or even by feeder districts. I have all of that compiled.
Okay, and Dr. Griffin, the $311,500 you're going to take out of the appropriate fund balance, what is the fund balance, what is the balance in the fund balance?
I'm going to let Mr. Josie respond to that. I believe it's approximately 1.6, 1.6 in our capital outlay.
Madam Chair, could we recognize County Manager?
Yes.
With respect to the capital item, and as I was looking through that, that capital is actually directly tied to our sales tax. We're required to give them a certain percentage of our sales tax, and so the way sales tax is trending, I would fully anticipate that we would give them certainly more than 1.83. The way where Toby and I are projecting it for the county side, I mean, I would think that number's probably closer to 1.95, maybe even pushing $2 million for next year. So I wouldn't anticipate you needing to pull that much money out of your capital fund balance, and/or you would have that $300,000 capacity to do additional improvements on schools, because I think that the way the sales tax is trending, you're going to have, we're going to likely be able to appropriate more funding for capital. Like I say, it's directly tied to that sales tax.
And certainly, just to clarify, one of the questions I think that has come up in the community or since our last facilities committee meeting, a question that I saw being circulated was, would the facility study include all 21 of our facilities? And it will include all of our facilities except Stanley Early College, because that is not on our campus, but it will, yes, it will include all other 20 facilities.
I just had one question. In looking at the teacher's supplements increased $500 per year, but you've got $86,000 for teacher's supplements, but then coaching supplements is $81,400.
Several years ago, our coaching supplements were reduced by 25% to meet budget, and so again, this is taking them, increasing by 25% of that supplement to put them back to where they were. I think it was three years ago when we had to cut the coaching supplements to meet budget that year.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Yes. You guys had requested perhaps meet with us, you know, the Board of Education and the County Commissioners, and I would like to see if we're going to proceed with that and perhaps even get a facilitator to kind of help, because there's a lot of, there's a lot of questions and rumors out there of what the County Commissioners have offered y'all and stuff like that, and I think it would be good to have a sit-down to see exactly what the needs are. And, you know, I know you just presented the budget, but there's consequences whether you close a school, open a school, re-district, and everything else, and this is a very critical time out there, and, you know, our job as County Commissioners is to fund, help fund education and to help make sure those facilities are in decent condition for the students. So, you know, I don't know how we proceed about setting up a meeting and perhaps using a, spending a little money to get a facilitator, so we don't just sit there.
The County Manager and I had a conversation today, and he is going to get the census of the Board to determine a date to actually have that meeting with you. Does that answer your question?
I don't think so at this time. I think this is just a, just general conversation. I think, you know, moving forward, if we, there may be some desire there, just if, in terms of defining what we want out of education and its impact on economic development moving forward, the leadership of our Board and their Board may want to look at, but at this point, for this conversation, I don't think a facilitator's needed, no.
And I would say that I agree with the manager. We all know each other, and we want to work on this and bring our questions to you, and certainly, you and your Board will have questions of us, and I believe we can reach that understanding without the expense of a facilitator at this time. So the County Manager will definitely be in touch with you with state.
Thank you, and again, I did want to just emphasize again that this budget does represent our current configuration for 21 schools.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
A little clarification on the ADM money. In years past, as I go back in my school years, the state allot your current expense money based on April's ADM, is that still the way it goes?
I'm going to defer that to Mr. Josie.
It's considered best one of two, but of the 70-some different funding streams they provide us, there are none, very few of them are actually tied to ADM only. There are all kinds of other little formulas they-
But that is, that is the number, is the April report, is that correct?
It's considered best one of two. It's of the, your two, it's the best one of two ADM months that they choose at random. The April head count, I think you may be referring to, is that they go by the EC funding is based on the April head count.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
I had, I had one question if I may, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Was looking at the continuing request after 2015-16, it appears by, me just kind of glancing over this, that there looks like there would be a total of 12 additional positions added, is that correct?
There are additional positions. I would go back and count, but yes, many of them are.
Some of them, the reason I'm trying to clarify that, some of them say a half a teacher, and I'm assuming that when it says half, they would split that with-
That's because we, yes, we already have a situation where one school only has a half of a position, so if we were able to increase it by half a position, then they would have a whole position.
But it looks like you're requesting to hire 12 more, 12 additional positions?
We're requesting additional support staff, yes.
Madam Chair, I think the County Manager has a couple more questions.
Okay.
I'll defer to you if you don't want any more questions, but I just had a couple more questions from, looking at this really quickly. In terms of the STEM, Dr. Griffin, do you think there's opportunities there to partner with the private sector to obtain some grants? I know that Pfeiffer's going to have a STEM camps this summer that I know are filling up very fast, obviously, for the reasons we know about. I mean, it's a critical, critical skill, but I know they got grants from the private sector to help make that happen. Is there, do you think there's opportunities there that are still on tap, that if, you know, if we couldn't get to the 415, that there's maybe some ways that we could partner with the private sector, or that, you know, that we could, you all could assist with writing some grants to close that gap?
We always have, we are always on the lookout for grants. We, in fact, met with Pfeiffer University about two weeks ago as far as partnering, and hoping they are going to be able to provide our teachers some professional development. So I guess to answer your question, we are always open to writing grants if we locate them, and so certainly, if we find a source, yes.
And I had one additional question, and I may have missed it. You said something about a grant with the, when you were talking about the 14-15 local budget highlights, and said something about you were able to receive a grant for maybe-
Okay, that is the, what I was speaking to is the grant that we usually get through juvenile justice, and each year, we apply for that to help fund part of a social worker, and it's my understanding that we have been successful getting that same grant for next year that does help fund that additional social worker that we added this year.
And I just had a point of clarification. I know that, you know, we provided that $200,000 grant for the instructional supplies and the literacy supplies and the startup athletic training, and I know you all were seeking some additional funds for a social worker and a nurse and some middle school sports. Were you able to find, I don't recall us necessarily putting those into the budget.
No.
Were you able to find efficiencies and then made those happen?
That's what, that's what we did.
Is that what you all did?
It is, because the amount, obviously, we did not get the total amount that we requested, so we took the amount that you requested, and it didn't coincide exactly line by line, and so we had to create those efficiencies where we could find it. Any other questions this evening?
I got a question, Dr. Griffin. How you doing? On the driver's ed, you explained something about the retreat, or Mr. Josie, how did that work again on the driver's ed, $169,000?
Basically, that is what we get from the state to fund driver's ed, and basically, we, Stanley County Schools pulls down the allotment, in other words, that allotment comes to us, but any child who lives in Stanley County, we are billed for those students when they take driver's ed. We contract driver's ed through Marvin Smith Driving School, and again, Mr. Josie, please correct me with these numbers if they're not correct, but the amount that you see here, this is exactly what we got this year, and we had to contribute an additional $5,000, I believe, in order to make that work for our current year. And again, we are responsible for Stanley, we, out of this allotment, we pay for Stanley County School students, we pay for any charter school students that have a Stanley County address, any private school students with a Stanley County address, or even homeschool students with a Stanley County Schools address, is paid for out of that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions?
Just want to say I appreciate all the work you guys do and appreciate the School Board for outfit, for being out there and just listening to the public and taking their time making decisions. I know they're being very diligent about there, and people want answers, and I know they're still gathering, doing research, so I appreciate all y'all are going through.
Commissioner LaHawn?
Dr. Griffin, as far as the curriculum that you're asking to be funded, is this the curriculum that would be competitive with Cabarrus County or the other counties that are in more metropolitan areas than we are?
As far as the STEM component, this is a starting point that I think from this and by training, I think where the positions that Commissioner Burleson was speaking of, the coaches and the lead teachers, that's the training component. So yes, I think with those materials and the training component for our teachers, yes, I do feel that we can be very competitive as far as the elementary and middle. If you'll notice in that, also included foreign language for our middle schools. As far as the high schools, basically, I'm asking for four additional locally-funded positions for high school, and as I had noted before to our Board and maybe to you at your planning retreat, that's not necessarily saying that all, each of the four high schools would get one teacher. That's saying that basically, if that's four teachers they could teach, you know, you've got four blocks or 16 sections there, would be to use that to be able to teach additional courses that could possibly be upper level or career technical ed courses that need to be added in addition. In other words, looking at your schools to see what you need. Would that make us at the high school what I would, where I want us to be? No, but it's certainly a starting point, and would help us be more competitive. I think it would help us add, again, some additional career technical ed courses, as well as some additional higher courses. I think you, you know, discussed some of the numbers with the advanced placement courses and solved the, some of the issues that we're dealing with there. So again, those four positions would not necessarily be used for whole positions. They would be to be able to teach additional courses, to contract with people to teach additional courses.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Griffin.
Thank you for your support of Stanley County Schools.
The next order of business is the recognition of the Finance Department for its receipt of the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. We received a letter announcing, pleased to notify us that the comprehensive annual financial report for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2014 qualifies for a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. The certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its manager. This certificate of achievement has been awarded and shipped to Toby R. Henson- This Certificate of Achievement has been awarded and shipped to Toby R. Henson, Stanley County Finance Director, and Mr. Henson, if you would please stand up, we want to applaud you.
He gets that about every year, I think.
Toby, thank you for the job well done, and as I mentioned to you before, I really appreciate your hard work.
Well, you certainly set an excellent example for your peers, and thank you very We've now come to the portion for the appointment to the Economic Development Commission. You have several replacements following seats that are currently vacant and for seats that will not be reappointed. I'm going to turn this over to our Economic Development Commissioner, Mr. Lohon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a number of current board members that we would like to reappoint, their terms expired probably almost two years ago, and I think it'd be a good idea to reappoint some. We could have reappointed the entire board, but that's not good, you don't need to get all new blood in on a board, you need some existing board members, and the first thing I would like to request is that the Board of Commissioners consider that we renew the terms for two years. Larry Balkum from the West, Charles Brown from the East, Terry Whitley from the South, Walter L. Davis Jr. from the South, those are the current board members, I'd like to ask that we extend their term by an additional two-year period.
Motion on that?
I'd need a motion on that, yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to extend the appointment of Larry Balkum from the West, Mr. Charles Brown from the East, Mr. Terry Whitley from the South, and Mr. Walter Davis Jr. from the South.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say no. The motion carries seven zero. I believe there's another request?
That's correct, Madam Chair, we have some vacant positions, one from the West that we would like to ask the Board of County Commissioners to consider Wayne Sasser to fill that position, another one from the East, and we ask that Mike Layton fill that position. We would like to appoint Cindy Bean, who has been serving at the at-large seat, to fill a vacancy in the Central District, and then we would like to appoint Stephen Chambers to fill a central position that we have available, and Kelly Huff would fill that position, I'm sorry, Kelly Huff would fill the position from the North, and then we would like to appoint Robbie Cohen to serve as a at-large member of the EDC.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve those.
We have a motion to approve Wayne Sasser, Cindy Bean, Mike Layton, Stephen Chambers, Kelly Huff, and Robbie Cohen to those areas as stated, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
We have a second to the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Point of order, a little discussion.
Excuse me, okay, I'm sorry.
Just wondering, were there any other volunteer applications? Because usually, usually in the packets, there's, we list all of them, so I'd just like to make a point that in the future, it'd be nice to have all the volunteer applications in here so we can see who else is available, and took the time to put their name in to volunteer for these positions.
Madam Chair, let me speak to that, there were a number of applications, and those, a lot of those applicants are open to serve on not only the EDC board, but many other boards that the county has, and I would ask that our clerk keep those on file, and we try to accommodate those citizens who volunteer to serve on boards, because you don't get a whole stack of those type applications, but we need to try to put to work those citizens as we get those in.
Let me just.
I guess, I guess my point is that they should, I feel they should be in the agenda packet so we could look at them, and they're, that the people who actually took the time that wanted to be on the EDC board or whatever board there is, we should have them in our packet to take a look at.
Actually, since this term of office, I've been keeping those applications that the clerk provides for us, so I was familiar with a number of people who had previously submitted their applications, which the clerk had given us, and I'm sure she'll be glad to meet your request. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say no, the motion carries seven zero. To continue, Central Anna Economic Development Commission, County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Madam Chair, not to be confused with the Stanley County Economic Development Commission, this is the, this is the Regional Economic Development Board that's managed through the Central Anna Council of Governments. Currently, Paul Stratus holds a private sector seat on that, and Chairman Dennis has a vacant, or has a public sector seat. They're asking that we consider reappointing Paul, and they're asking for us to consider reappointing someone or appointing someone to the public sector seat. That's for your consideration, and you may want to, you may want to make that appointment this evening, or you may want to table that, it's completely up to you.
What's the pleasure of the board? Do you want to table the appointment to the public sector, from the public sector?
Madam Chair, I think we should just make a motion to, or I would like to make a motion to table that, because I don't think we've had the time to really discuss.
Can, can we go ahead and, and have a motion to appoint Paul Stratus?
Yes, I would, I guess let me retract my previous motion and make a motion to go ahead and appoint Paul Stratus to the private sector position and for us to table the public sector position until a later meeting.
We have a motion and a second by Commissioner Dennis, all those in favor say aye, all those opposed say no, the motion carries seven zero. Mr. Andy Lucas, County Manager, proclamation.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, before you for consideration is a proclamation for the Stamp Out Hunger Food Drive on Saturday, May 9, 2015, and then the proclamation is in your packet for consideration.
Madam Chair, my commission approve.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say no, the motion carries seven zero. Commissioner Lohon, the proclamation declaring May 7, 2015 as the National Day of Prayer in Stanley County.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and as you stated, would like to recommend that we make a proclamation as May 7, as National Day of Prayer in Stanley County, it's a National Day of Prayer 2015, and the proclamation reads by the Stanley County Board of Commissioners and the State of North Carolina proclamation, whereas May the 7, 2015 marks the 64th consecutive observance of the National Day of Prayer as mandated by both Congress and by the President in Public Law 100-307, and whereas, Lord, hear our cry, is the theme of the 2015 National Day of Prayer, whereas the National Day of Prayer has been a part of our country heritage since the first one which was declared by the Continental Congress in 1775, and whereas leaders of our nation and of our Stanley County community have relied upon the power of prayer throughout our history, and I want to say amen to that. Now therefore, we, the County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May 7, 2015, as the Day of Prayer in Stanley County, North Carolina, and urges our citizens to join together in their homes, places of work, and places of worship, to pray for the unity of our hearts of all mankind, and to continue in prayer for our state and our nation, and I would like to ask that someone make a motion this be adopted the 20th day of April.
We have a motion to approve the resolution, is there a second? We have a second by Commissioner McIntyre, is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say no, the motion carries seven zero. Consent agenda, are there any adjustments to the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye, all those opposed say no. Ladies and gentlemen, it is now time for a public comment, if anyone would like to come up and address the board. Mr. Mullis, welcome back.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman Louder. Before I begin, I really will be brief because I know that it's late, and I'll be about five minutes, but wow, I was so glad to hear that our school system's doing well, was really glad that Mr. Boss from Cabarrus County used the word nugget, for those of you who are from around here, you understand exactly what he means, that's actually the heart of my message as well. Commissioner Lohon, Lord, hear our prayer, very appropriate, so Alex has provided you a handout. My name is John Mullis, and I'm here to address you tonight, reside in Norwood. I'm here on behalf of the nonprofit group Advocates for Communities in Excellence in Schools, also known as the acronym ACES. It's been two months, two months since I last came before you, and I wanted to thank you for hearing our concerns of the community and plans under consideration by the Stanley County Board of Education relating to potential school closures. I know that you heard me, soon after I addressed you, there was a workshop, and it was obvious, and I really, really appreciate your, your taking the interest to heart. Since my address, your board has met with school officials, shared your concerns as well, the towns of Oakboro and Norwood have also met with the entire Board of Education. In all three cases, it was obviously clear that each of those elected bodies were against the proposed plans and demanded that they be nixed. Oakboro and Norwood actually submitted resolutions to that effect, yet the Board of Education appears to be continuing down the same unwanted path despite public outcry. Not only does our research raise significance and concerns with the plans being proposed, we cannot find a justifiable need to warrant such an unintelligent and ill-conceived plan. It is the unwillingness to acknowledge not only the concerns of the constituents, but elected officials as well. It is this inaction that has led to the formation of Advocates for Communities in Excellence in Schools. Our mission is to advocate for equal opportunity for all students in Stanley County Schools and defend our communities and community schools. Our structure and vision is intended to be a long-term event. While we acknowledge that changes are necessary in our education system, those changes should have occurred years ago. Additionally, the plan that is being proposed not only is by the design of a few who reside in Albemarle and who have alternative motives, it is our understanding that a few have been dissatisfied with the operation of a single high school, Albemarle Senior High. The reinvestment plan of the future should also not be at the expense of the communities that are most affected, particular when there are no capacity issues if redistricting were to occur. What should happen is that situation should be resolved. Could all of this be so simple as just correcting the issues at one single high school? With regards to capacity issues, what seems to be used is justification for consolidation. Our research using ADM records dated 11/20/2014 and found on the county schools website, excluding mobile units in Stanley Early College and Stanley Academy, we found the total capacity numbers reflected below. In their current configuration, the four high schools are at 79% capacity, the four middle schools at 88% capacity, the 11 elementary schools at 80% capacity. So when consideration is given to the current middle school enrollment, as those move up five through eight, there's an additional 250 more students that'll be transitioning from that middle school to the high school environment. Notwithstanding leakage to charter schools or homeschools, that number could obviously lower, but it's noteworthy to mention that transfers are capped at 85% capacity with schools with mobiles. Currently, six schools do not accept transfers, they're at 85% or above capacity. So if redistricting were to occur with all existing schools to remain open, and the, and I think the above adequately illustrates capacity numbers, now to be fair, district lines can be difficult to determine based on geographic consideration, but we advocate that redistricting should occur and grandfathering options should be available to minimize the effects on students and their families. ACES supports keeping all existing schools open and opposes any plan that closes any school, instead, we advocate for redistricting. With regards to the four traditional high schools, below you'll find the current projections. Given the fact that the two high schools that are proposed to remain open are already over capacity, one was asked, what is the rationale behind their thought process? Of the two schools under consideration to be closed, Albemarle High is slightly under capacity while South Stanley exceeds its target capacity in the near future. Again, one must ask why. For all these reasons, ACES is formed in hopes of sharing with the public why citizens should not just take the Board of Education's word for it when they speak or when they choose not to speak. The graph below, you will notice, lists Albemarle High on the left, South Stanley students on the right, shows the current capacity of students, or the current number of students along with the capacity. These numbers were derived using the ADM numbers provided. As graduating classes left and the next class moved up, that class dropped off, so we tried to back calculate, if we've made any errors, we'll be happy to retract that data, but that's all that we had available. But that just shows, given that there's no other leakage to homeschools or charters or population drastic changes, there's not a capacity issue. However, when you look at the, the next page, West Stanley on the left and North Stanley on the right, the two that are remaining open, you see real quick, they're already at 100% excluding mobile classrooms. So why would you want to close Albemarle and South Stanley? If you did, why would you want to move 880 students into over-capacity schools with existing student enrollment of 1,400? And then they're going to need to start construction at those two schools, because they're already over capacity. So in closing, the above is just the capacity piece of this equation. As part of our mission, ACES is also concerned with the decimating community economic impacts should these plans be implemented, that is why community is in our name and our mission statement. I'll not mention those concerns because I did address those previously, however, I've left that in your handout. ACES feels strongly that the reinvestment plan for the future is biased, unfair, and unjust. It is our view that the reinvestment plan is really a financial reallocation plan. It is the hope of ACES that when you meet with the Board of Education, that you will demand the Board of Education to nix plans that shut our community schools. Instead, please advocate for redistricting and other ways to provide curriculum in the community-school setting. That is truly what the majority of Stanley County citizens is expecting. Now, I'll be happy to discuss any of the charts or methodology, because I'm sure there'll be some questions.
Does anyone have any question?
Mr. Mullis?
Yes.
How did you, tell me again how you arrived at these estimated.
If you'll look at the current ADM numbers, it's really hard to see, Commissioner Lohon, but at the top, you've got kindergarten, then you've got the class on the grid, this grid here at the top, okay, I apologize, we'll make sure that we get you a copy. But basically what we did, it lists the capacity of those schools, and as the schools, as the incoming year came in, we dropped the. we dropped the current year for the next year and just kind of rolled those numbers forward. It's the only way we could get to potential capacity using the existing enrollment. If there's no other questions, I really appreciate your support. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mullis. I'll begin to my right. Commissioner Ushido, would you like to address?
I got a, got a few things. First of all, the security issue. I mean, we're either going to have security here or not have security at our meetings. And I hate to beat a dead horse, but, you know, we got to be consistent with it. And I appreciate the sheriff coming an hour and 15 minutes into our meeting. Anyway, we're at a crossroads with education right now. And it's about money. Y'all need to lobby not only us, but your legislators in Raleigh about getting money to properly fund school. We had a nice presentation from Dr. Griffin tonight where it's going to ask him for a couple million dollars more, you know, to help better educate, educate the children. And also with the facilities, you know, as I stated before, if we're going to keep all our facilities open, we owe it to our children to have them in schools that aren't falling apart physically. You know, I'm committed to help find that funding if they all stay open. I appreciate the work the school board has done, and they have not made any decision yet. They're still going through the process. So once they make any decisions, then that's when, you know, you really have to figure out whether you agree or don't agree. I mean, just because they're just, I think, I think Dr. Griffin's looking for information on Plan A or Plan B, there may be an alternative to it that they come up with after they get all the information. If you remember, a few years ago, they were, Rich, Oakboro was recommended for closure, and Oakboro was saved, but the last minute, they put a plan out there to close Ridgecrest. And none of the current county commissioners, I mean, the, the school board members voted to close Ridgecrest. Not one of them. So you never know what's going to happen. Couple of other things on the, the meet, the committees I serve on, the senior services. On May the 12th, we're going to have the luncheon with the, you have the senior, the senior center. And if y'all get a chance, it's good to come down and take questions from the constituents. The library, I mean, they brought their presentation to, tonight. I hope we could move forward with their request to move the museum forward to the new location. And a little bit about my town meetings, I went to Norwood. What I do is once a year, I go to different town meetings. I just want to report on what happened, the main things that happened down there. At the Norwood meeting, one of the big discussions was House Bill 526. And was kind of interesting because there's, the bills wants to remove certain property from the corporate limits of the town of Norwood, and that's basically out, out at the lake. And if they're deannexed from the town of Norwood, it's going to cost the town of Norwood $14,000. And some of the effects, what it is, is in the water. So some of the effects of what's going to happen out there and, and is that the people's land that's on the water, like if, if someone breaks into their house, they'll call the town of Norwood. If someone breaks into their boathouse, that's on the dock, they call the sheriff's department. And the same with fire, they have two different people, you know, two different entities to call. So that's just one thing they talked about. And down in Locust, they're, I think, $45,000 short. And they're looking at either cutting funds or I think perhaps a three cent tax rate for property tax. So, I mean, it's just tied out there with the money. So we got to figure as a county if we want to just keep tightening the belt or if we want to just, just sometimes make an investment in some projects. That's all I got.
Commissioner Lohan?
I'm going to report on the Albemarle Downtown Development Commission. I serve on that board as a county commissioner. The last meeting we had was a week ago today, and several things that were talked about was the Outdoor Bonanza, which took place, I think, toward the end of March. It was very successful, again, raising funds for three charities, one being the Shriners Club, I believe, the hospital, and also ADDC. There's also, on May the 2nd, mark your calendar and encourage your friends to come downtown Albemarle. I think they start events like at 1:00, but on that same day, they're going to have a beach blast again this year with a DJ playing beach music, Top 40 music that starts at 6:00, goes from 6:00 to 10:00. So I encourage you to, to come out and attend that event. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis? Commissioner Burleson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like to congratulate Toby. Thank you for all your work. Thank you, everyone that's here for coming. And one other thing, Commissioner Ushido, I think it is very inappropriate to continue to berate every one of our elected officials that show up at our meeting. You don't know what Sheriff Burris was dealing with this evening. It has been bad weather, storming, tornadoes around the area. And I don't know whether there was wrecks or what was going on, but Sheriff Burris is doing a fine job. And just because he shows up a little bit late at a meeting, I certainly feel fine. I feel like the rest of these members up here on this board are okay. I know most everyone out there by name, so if you're unsafe, you know, I don't know. Maybe, maybe you should go through the concealed carry glass or something to protect yourself. And if Sheriff Burris has anything to say, I, if Madam, Madam Chair, if, if he'd like to stand up and say something, I'd certainly be fine with it. No further comment.
Commissioner McIntyre?
Just like to report that I sit on the DSS board, and we did have April as Child Abuse Awareness Month, and just want to remind folks of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Efrid?
I know Chief Udi's gone now from Ridgecrest, but I certainly appreciate, you know, all the job that they do. I serve on the Fire District Commissioner, and, and, you know, folks, like Joseph said, you know, when there's storming, you know, in the middle of the night, those guys jump up and don't think a thing about it. So I appreciate what they do, and, and the fire departments are a business. Those fire trucks, anything in red costs a lot of money, and I certainly appreciate, you know, what they do. May 7th, the National Day of Prayer, I certainly appreciate Chairman, I mean, excuse me, Commissioner Dennis for being there in 1775 when this thing was proclaimed. But we have a service, we have a service out in Locust in Town Center at 12:00 that day. It's a huge service. I know, I think they used to have one in Albemarle. I don't know if they still do or not. They have one in Albemarle. I encourage you to attend those events. It lasts about an hour in Locust, and it's a really good event. And the last thing I got, and this is just for me personally, my daughter passed away in 1999, and we have a motorcycle run every year. This is the 17th annual. This coming Saturday will be her bike run, and we do that for scholarships for students at West Stanley High School. And if you don't ride a motorcycle, you can come be a part of it. But we've given away over $67,000 in scholarships to students at West Stanley. So we care about education. Really do. Madam Chair, that's all.
I have to say that Commissioner Efrid is absolutely right. That is a fun event. I don't ride a motorcycle, but I've been several years in a row. It's good food and good fellowship, and certainly a most worthy cause. I serve on the Health Board, and we had a meeting scheduled, and due to the weather, our meeting was canceled. So I can't give you a report on that. I can tell you that our next regular meeting will be Monday, May the 18th at 7:00. Commissioners, we have a joint meeting with the Library Board of Trustees for Monday, May 18th at 5:30. So we'll eat with our library board, and then we'll come and attend to the county's business. And to the public that's attended our meeting tonight, I appreciate your attendance, and I appreciate and respect your comments, and thank you. Now, we need to go into closed session to discuss a real estate transaction in accordance with... I don't ask the manager. Excuse me, Commissioner Dennis wants me to ask the manager, and we had an agreement, Commissioner Dennis. We'll, we'll give you a copy of it. Okay. Back to business. To discuss a real estate transaction in accordance with General Statute Gentlemen, we're in closed session.
Make a motion to recess.
Okay, we'll recess.
Then go into closed session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Oh. I don't, I never asked Jenny. I never asked any. I never do. No, I've already, did that.